Call this meeting to order at 6:01. This is our first virtual meeting of the New Britain Board of Education. And if Kristin can unmute herself and call the roll, we'll see if we can get this establish a quorum.
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercier.
Here.
Dr. Violet Jimenez-Sims.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins. Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Ms. Diane Leia.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes. Ms. Nancy Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Conaway.
Here.
For the record, Ms. Dawkins is here. I think she is just having trouble getting her microphone unmuted.
And just a reminder that if you need to unmute your microphone, it's Ctrl-D as in David. All right, get back to the agenda here. So can we start with a pledge of allegiance? Mr. Kane, can you lead us in that?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now, let's, before we get into the business, take a moment of meditation and just keep in our thoughts all of the families who have a loved one in the hospital or recently passed, and all of the essential workers, first responders, and medical personnel who are putting themselves at risk to help us through this crisis. Okay, and do we have anybody who has called in for public participation?
Yes, Mr. Garrett, there's one person who's called in. The phone number ends in 16. They're currently mute. If they could unmute if they're here for public participation.
I think if they, to unmute, they probably need to do star 6.
Pound 6 or star 6.
One of the two. The person who's called in, if you could please try to unmute yourself by using star 6 or pound 6.
Their option is if they want to hang up and try calling back in again, it will tell them what exactly the prompt is at the beginning. I'm not sure if that's someone from staff who might be calling in to listen over the phone.
Whoever is on the phone for the meeting, if you can unmute yourself to tell us who you are, whether that's a staff person or it's somebody calling in for public participation. And if you are frustrated because you can't figure out how to unmute yourself, hang up and dial the number again so that you get the information about how to unmute yourself when you call in.
I did just check. It is star 6.
Star 6, yes.
I believe the organizer of the meeting can unmute them?
No, I cannot. They have to unmute themselves. Do you not believe they posted in chat via phone? No. I would suggest we try, they're the only person who's called in. I would suggest we try going forward. And if they call back in, we can try to give them the floor again.
So let's now move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Well, it's been a pretty hectic few weeks, I will say. But I'm only going to spend a couple of minutes. What I've asked is for my pupil service director, my partnership, and my academics to speak for a few minutes rather than putting things in writing, but just to give you an update on the work that we've done. It's been an amazing lift, and I am just incredibly proud of the New Britain staff as a whole for being responsive and working around the clock to make sure we have devices in students' hands. And while we're not at 100%, we worked very hard right up until March 31st to try, and then felt it was unsafe to continue that practice of having people congregate and pick up a device. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Spalding, our director for pupil services, to speak for a few minutes on updates in his department.
Hi, everyone. Hold on. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. I only see you and Nancy, superintendent, sorry. Okay, so I just want to touch base. So, you know, for the first two weeks of the process, our goal was to provide maintenance for all our children. Since we've gone into phase two, what we've done is we followed our guidance from the State Department of Ed, primarily putting in place equity and continued education, educational opportunities for all of our students. Communication and data collection has been the goal. And so what we did last week is we met with every member of our people services staff, every special education teacher, all our service providers. We brought in the union leaders, leadership. We brought in paraeducators and admins from the buildings. And we went through the process as to what the expectation was for all our staff, setting up Google platforms, long-distance learning, and the goal of, again, communicating to our families. It's paramount here at this time. And also data collection as to whatever we, whatever family, whatever we're working on for kids, we need to have a record of that. And so those expectations were put in place. In addition, for our paraeducators, we have 214 of them. We put in adult learning in place for them. So in addition to supporting our teachers and our related service staff in our Google platforms, we will also be providing an opportunity at this time for our paraeducators to get extra learning during this time. When we're down, there's an expectation that they'll be learning every day. And we have about 80 videos through our Safe Schools program in the district, as well as reading that they'll be doing and working with our related services staff to develop their skills during this period. In addition, we're providing, all of our school psychologists will be supporting our social workers moving forward as outreach to our families. So again, we recognize that this is a very stressful time. It's a stressful time for everyone on this call right now, everyone in this meeting. It's particularly stressful for our families and for our kids. And so for me, the most important thing has been, and for the superintendent, is to make sure that communication is continuing. And so we're going to be collaborating with our, our social workers and our school psychologists will be collaborating with our school teachers to support families and also aligning them with our school-based health centers support staff such as Clinberg for those additional supports. In addition, I put some things on the web for our contacts. So for instance, if anyone needs to reach us, I mean, people services staff from Gates, they have that contact. I'll be sending out a robo-call tomorrow. Documentation letters are going to be going out in Spanish and English tomorrow as well as to supports that we'll be providing. And in addition, I'm also collaborating with CPAC, which is a community-based organization for services for our families here in Central Connecticut.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to have Laura Bulkey now jump in as far as the academics goes and how we're supporting our students with inclusion, EL, and core instruction. Laura, are you on?
I believe she may need to unmute herself.
Oh, Laura, can you unmute? I saw your name pop up, so. All right, we'll hold off a minute. I'm going to ask Sandra Sanford to jump in. I'm sorry, there'll be a kind of a, Sandra's going to talk to you about our partnership and what we've been working on over the last few weeks around feeding students and getting our makeshift manufacturing lab up and running. So Sandra, you're up.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. I'll kind of follow suit with Mark and talk about in phase one, the family-school liaisons and the partnership office worked extremely hard to ensure, one, that we were connecting with our families so that they can fill out a survey. Our office also worked on translating everything into Spanish and Arabic so we can get videos and communications out to our families, as well as updating the webpage and our Facebook page for constant outreach push in the very first week so that we can get our families ready with either Chromebook or connected to the website so they can find their resources. There was a lot of heavy lifting in that week and a lot of teamwork, collaboration amongst other departments as well to ensure that we can get enough information out to our family-school liaisons. We did the surveys, we connected with families, and we continue to. The family-school liaisons did a lot of phone calls and they have, and reaching to families not just on their caseload. This was really like rolling up your sleeves and jumping in to support all families that were in need. We updated our communication portals and as a team worked really hard to make those connections. In phase two, our FSLs are now working with the families to see how it's going after the students and families are connecting and to help those families navigate their Google Classroom, Google Meets, and how-to videos, as well as reaching out to remind families that the census is around the corner and actually, right now, to help support that work and having those dialogues in addition to everything else that they normally do with outreach to those families and supports. In regards to the manufacturing, New Britain High School is, this week is opening up as a pop-up manufacturing site. And they're creating, working with Superintendent Sarah, OK Industries, Community Foundation, and many other industries to have a pop-up assembly lines, three assembly lines to make over 15,000 face shields for our local hospitals and our community first responders, EMTs, firefighters. And that assembly, we're looking for volunteers to run two shifts. And that is happening hopefully with the start of Thursday with our first assembly line. We are following CDC guidelines on this pop-up manufacturing site. And we have a volunteer school nurse that's going to be doing the questionnaire at first and ensuring all of our guidelines throughout the whole day and throughout the whole production so that we can help support our community and ensure that everybody's safe, keeping priority of everyone staying healthy and safe.
Thanks, Sandra. I also want to add too, I know I saw Laura disconnected and I'm not sure if I saw her. Oh, she just joined again. But I just want to say Jackie Matty, our nursing supervisor, who is a liaison to the Department of Public Health, has been instrumental every step of the way by providing information to our 1186 workers who are still in our buildings now, to, she is the person all administrators know to connect with her if someone in our organization is tested positive. I can't thank her enough, and I did update the board along the way. We've donated much to the Hospital for Central Connecticut in terms of gloves, shields, masks, gowns, and whatever we had in the building. Our nurses together went in, they dispensed medications, but they also collected all of those extra things. We're now partnering, thanks to Helen Talalage for running over to WCA, who is a childcare provider still, and providing them with just toilet cleaners and just different materials that we have in the building that we are shipping out and donating out to all of the first-line people who need these resources. I see Laura now front and center, and I'm going to have her to take over.
Yes. Nice. Hi, everybody. I'm sorry. You know, as I've been telling people, our poor internet is just trying to figure out how to get three kids through education right now and a husband also working from home. So I'll speak to academics real briefly. Our phase one began on Wednesday, March 11th, right in Department of Academics on the fifth floor, when we pulled together an extremely productive, amazing group of people who put together our entire DAB website. If you have not explored our DAB website, I encourage you to do so. Our theme for phase one, which began that March 11th and right through last Friday, actually, the Friday before March 27th, our theme was organization and preparation. We needed to organize the resources that we had. We needed to prepare for online learning or whatever the next phase was going to look like. And at that point on March 11th, we didn't even know there was going to be a next phase. So we got together, we pulled all the coaches, we had special education represented, we had ESL represented, and we established our DAB website for practice and maintenance learning. And that was the call for our first two weeks, was really just try and maintain and touch base with families. That was number one, touch base with families, establish some information for yourself, learn how to use Google Classroom, and just encourage students to maintain the learning that they had done to that point. The other thing we did on March 11th, because the DAB website was going to be online, but we knew we were going to have some families who weren't able to access that learning online at that time, is we made packets available to families without internet or devices. So those went out to the schools as well by that Friday, the 13th. So people did go home, were able to go home with print packets. We created planning templates and organized our support resources, emphasizing that collaboration across departments, across special education, across ESL and the mainstream teachers. So that was our behind-the-scenes work while teachers were learning how to use Google Classroom. We were creating the resources that we knew we were going to need for phase two. So we gave choice to teachers, but we put together those pieces. We were getting, and those of you that work in school districts around the state, we were being inundated with offers from so many organizations. I'm so grateful for the organizations that stepped up and gave school districts access to their programs and programming for free. It's really been a wonder to see the generosity of all of these companies and organizations. So we had to organize all of that information and put it somewhere with usernames and passwords and things for families to understand and make sure they understood that there was absolutely, positively no cost to them whatsoever, no credit card numbers required, no nothing was required of them to be able to access these things. So a lot of our work in phase one, once we had established DAB and once we had created those resources, was preparation for phase two. So we had to create structures for sharing plans with families on school pages. We created Google Classrooms in partnership with MIS. MIS has been indispensable, if you haven't already heard that, for staff so that they could learn the applications from which online learning would be based. So in order to understand how to have Google Meets with your co-staff, with your teams, with your grade-level teams, with your special education teachers, with your admins, they had to learn Google Meet, they had to learn Google Classroom, and they had to do it in a, you know, a pretty tight timeline so that we could go sort of live on March 30th. So we had to set up all of those Google Classrooms, and then we had to roll out planning structures to administrators and offer and make available both coach and Department of Academic support. So our CITs, Amy, me, Jen Wright, like the administrators in the department, Wanda in the Department of Academics, you know, just making sure that we were there to support, that we were present at team meetings, you know, prior to, so getting ready right up until March 27th so that people understood, you know, what the resources were and how they could use them. Phase two began on March 30th, last Monday. The theme there was rollout and support. So, you know, what has been created for you and how can you use it? In what ways is it flexible? And it is flexible in many ways, you know, for teachers to personalize, to add, you know, images and things like that. So it was our kickoff of phase two, which we're calling Continued Educational Opportunities. And we have been supporting admins, teams, and teachers with the use of these resources and templates. We've been sharing outreach strategies, lesson plans, providing insight and guidance as needed or requested. You know, where most of us are, actually, all of us are attending different meetings of different grade-level teams to offer support. We're sort of scattered throughout. You know, I'm in a lot of the middle school meetings, for example. And then just to update you on some ongoing things, what's ongoing, either because it was already in motion or because we've had to start something new. We've revisited the organization and presentation of the DAB website. So, you know, it was what it was when we left for the day on the 11th of March, and then we've had to kind of constantly upgrade it. And you know Jeff, in his mind, he's constantly thinking of ways to make it better. And so between him and Kristi Tilton, who is a miracle worker herself, it just gets better every day. And Randy and Sandra have been adding input as well. So the how-to videos were posted there. It's really kind of become a neat collaborative space for different departments to come together. Our Ed-Advance work is continuing to the extent that it can. Curriculum resources are being vetted. Unit design and writing is progressing, and communication is taking place once to twice a week with Amy and Wanda and I and the representatives from Ed-Advance. Wilson teachers are meeting virtually weekly to share resources and plan for continuing online instruction. So they are regularly together. The two different cohorts meet, I believe separately, and meet with Ally and brainstorm ideas for how to keep some momentum going. And Edgenuity, our credit recovery software training, is taking place actually tomorrow. And that does it for me. I'm sorry if that was longer than five minutes.
No, that was good. Does anyone have any questions for us at this point? There's so much. I tried to keep you updated as well via written, through email and all of my communications out to staff as well. Any questions right now?
Is Merrill still with us? Just to confirm, is anyone else hearing Merrill speak?
No, I'm not. This is superintendent.
I am not, and I don't see anybody else. Everybody just kind of froze there for a second.
I don't see Merrill on camera either.
I think Merrill's frozen.
In that case, I'll step in as if he'd stepped out in a meeting. And we'll go on. Next item was committee reports. I do not believe any committees met, so there's no report from policy. Is that no report, Ms. Parker? Okay. Ms. Conley, anything from finance? No report, Ms. Conley?
Sorry, I don't, am I still actually in the meeting?
You are still in the meeting. We can hear you.
I apologize. I do not have anything. We were not able to meet.
Curriculum, Dr. Sims?
No meeting for us either, nothing to report.
Okay, that concludes committee reports. Yes, I don't think I missed any. Are there any board members at this time who would like to make a report? If you could just type a message in chat if you have something that you'd like to report.
No report for personnel. I had a computer glitch.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I'm going to give another 10 seconds for any board members who want to report to raise their hands in chat, and then we'll move on. Okay. Up Mr. Gay's back, so I'll turn it back over to him. We just made it through board reports. Merrill, are you unable to unmute yourself? I see you on screen, but I don't hear you. Okay. Is clicking the little microphone not working? Yeah, just as a bandwidth conservation and possibly put a little less stress on the board members. If you're a cabinet member, could you turn off your camera? And we'll see if that might help. And I'm just gonna ask any board members who are still able to hear me and see the video, if you could give a thumbs up on camera and just hold it for me. Okay, so we have a, Merrill is giving me a thumbs up on one of his screens, so that's good. Tony, I saw thumbs up from you. Annie, can you still hear me? Okay, Violet can still hear me. Diane can still hear me. It looks like most of us are still here, so we still have a quorum if the board's happy to continue proceeding for now. Merrill's back, and I believe you're unmuted, so let's just have you keep going.
I don't know that, can you hear me? I don't know why this thing isn't letting me unmute.
We'll just leave you unmuted then.
You can hear me, okay, because I have something saying the page is unresponsive, and it tells me I'm unmuted, that I am muted, but. So you still hear me, right?
This is the Superintendent. Can you hear me? I can hear you, Merrill, right now.
Merrill, are you still here?
Hear us? Yes, okay. Okay, so.
You might want to try turning off.
To.
You might want to try turning off.
Business?
Merrill's, that might be slowing you down.
We have. Yes. You can, you can hear me. So. Yes. Grid view.
Merrill and Gail have left the meeting, it says.
Gail's back. I think Merrill's also just experiencing extreme latency when he's in. I suggest we plug ahead, and if Merrill can join us back again, that'll be great. But we still have two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, we still have a quorum. So moving on, the next item on the agenda under old business was approved policy 411.411.1.3, process for hiring of head coaches. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Gail.
I'll take that as a motion from Gail and a second.
Second, Violet.
Violet. Are there any discussion questions about this policy?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the policy, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, Annie.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing several ayes and no nays, the motion carries. Gail, do you think, Merrill, do you think you're back, or should I keep going?
Nick, can he call one of us on his cell phone and listen in that way and speak?
He could also actually call into the meeting using the meeting phone number if he'd like. And he could at least do that and leave his camera on and talk into the phone. That's another option. We just had another Merrill join the meeting. You're on mute on that device, Merrill.
Okay.
You now.
Yay, all right. That was the Chromebook that was giving me trouble then. So yes, I'm a yes vote. Let's move on to the next thing. Of course, now I've got to pull up the agenda on the other computer so that I can.
Next item on the agenda is approved revised policy 0521, which is the equal employment opportunity and non-discrimination policy. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Gail.
Second, Annie.
Which is made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Parker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, say aye and give a thumbs up.
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Oh, thumbs down.
Mr. Maria, so you having some issues? Or are you all set? Okay, moving on. Next item is policy 2151, recommendations for administrative positions. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve, Annie.
Have a second?
Second, Diane.
Second.
Discussion.
Violet.
That's a motion by Diane, a motion by Annie, seconded by Diane. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no opposed and no lot of ayes, motion carries. Are you ready, Merrill?
Yep. Okay, so the next one is approved revised policy 4131, professional staff development. This was reviewed by the Policy Subcommittee on February 18th. Is there a second? A motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Gail.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Is this the first or second read? Second.
This would be our second read.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye with a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. Move on to the next one, which is approving revised policy 5134, students who are pregnant, parenting, or parents.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Okay, so we've got, everybody wants to make this motion. So.
Say.
Second.
Motion.
Second, Violet.
Diana, seconded by Violet. Any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye with a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed with a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the next one. Personnel approving a new job description for an equity officer. This was submitted by the Superintendent at the Special Board meeting on the 14th.
Motion, Gail.
The second from Annie?
Second, Annie.
All right, is there discussion?
I'm curious where the job description came from.
The job description was, I'm sorry, so the job description was a combination of several. We are looking for, it was created by us, taken from many different ones across the state, and one that we felt would serve the needs of what we want it to be. Just, it's beyond. It's beyond training around cultural responsiveness. It's, it's ensuring that there is a lens of equity throughout our district, from students to families to staff. And it's, it's a, it's a branch of our town.
So, do we have other districts that we know have this position?
Yes, there are other with this position. I, I think it's critically important, too, to note, not only with our workaround minority teacher recruitment, and beyond teachers, but all staff, and as we embark on this curriculum renewal, to ensure that, that this position is looking at everything and creating a team of people to look and vet and ensure that in all areas of our organization, we are practicing, anything we create should be through the lens of equity. And it would take someone who is trained in this to know this. It's a first, it's a first in our district. We did not add an administrator on. What we did was, we do have a retirement on administrator who is retiring, and this replaces that position.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? And remember, you may have to unmute yourself if you're muted and you want to say something. Okay, seeing no, hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye with a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed with a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. And so then the last piece of this is approving the new position request for the equity officer. And as stated before, this is not a new position. It is repurposing a previous administrative position. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, Annie.
Okay.
Second by Tony.
Second, Diana.
Okay, Tony beat you there. Okay, so we have a seconded motion by, a motion by Annie, seconded by Tony. Further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye, thumbs up.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. So you have before you a consent agenda with items eight through L. Does anybody want to take any of those items off for further discussion? Anybody want to take any of those off? All right, in that case, I will accept a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Annie.
Annie moved it, Violet seconded it. And is there, in that case, we don't have discussion on the consent agenda, so we will let the secretary cast one vote in favor of that. And let's move on to new business. So the first item, item A, is Personnel Committee approving administrative appointment. Is there, Nancy, do you want to tell us what that is?
Sure. On our special board meeting back on March 13th, I believe it was, I brought a name forward to the board and to review a resume and have a discussion around our, the new position for Director of Personnel and Talent Development. At that time, and so tonight I am bringing forward the name, Ms. Mary Ellen Manning. I believe that she's in the audience right now. And not, I'm pretty sure she's muted. I'm not sure, do we want to go into executive session for this, Merrill?
Yeah.
Or.
Okay, so yes, I guess we should go into executive session if. Let's do that now. Nick, do you know the, can you tell us how we do the executive session again?
So first, we need a motion to go into executive session. So I'd move, we go into executive session with the Superintendent, Ms. Mary Ellen Manning will be joining us, I believe. And Mr. Kane will be joining us as well. Is there anyone else, Nancy?
Mr. Forn can come in as well, and I think that's a full house for us.
Okay, so I will motion that we go into executive session with the Superintendent, Mr. Kane, Mr. Forn, and Mrs. Manning.
Second.
Yep.
So that means we now, do we end the live stream? Is that how we do this for the time being?
First, we need to vote.
Okay, yes, good. Well, good point. We have a seconded motion. All in favor going into executive session to consider an administrative.
Aye.
Say aye with.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
We are going into executive session. Nick, can you just review for anybody watching how this is going to work?
Yes, so we're going to pause the live stream and stop the recording. We will be back after executive session, and the live stream will automatically start back up. So all cabinet members who are not part of executive session will disconnect from the call. You will receive a text message from Nancy when it is okay to join back in.
Okay.
And Kristen, I will text you. I am turning off live streaming and recording now. I don't know why.
Must be the name. Must be the name.
And I'll text him to make sure that he can actually get back in.
All right, we are just trying to get back all of our board members from executive session, and then we will resume in a minute or two. Okay.
Okay, he said he's currently trying to rejoin, but he told us to go ahead.
Okay. So we are back from executive session. So we need a motion to approve item A, approving the administrative appointment for the new talent and human resources position.
Motion to approve the appointment of Mary Ellen Manning as Director of Talent and Human Resources, I believe is the correct title.
Second, Gail.
All right, so we have a seconded motion, any discussion? Remember, you'll need to unmute yourself if you want to say something. If you're already muted. Okay. So, hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving Mary Ellen Manning as the new Talent and Human Resources Director, or whatever the position, this title is officially called, because I don't have it in front of me. Say aye, and give us a thumbs up.
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Mary Ellen. So now, let's move on to the next one, which is Vendor Contracts. Kevin Kane, do you want to unmute yourself and tell us about this?
Okay, this is the item that we discussed about executive session.
So this is actually not, we have not discussed that. So we're going to have to postpone this until after we go back into executive session again, because we forgot to put that into the call for the executive session. So we're going to have to do that. We're going to push this to the end of the agenda and do the other things first, and come back to this, okay?
Mr. Kane?
Yes?
Question for the superintendent through you. Is item C also something that she wanted to discuss in executive session?
Nancy, you there? Can you unmute yourself and?
No, that is, sorry, that is not for executive session. That's to be discussed now.
Thank you.
Calendar, okay. So, you want to snort us off there?
Sure. Thank you. I learned a few, well, let's start it here. Families were inquiring about whether or not we would be pushing through April break, because our students are just really getting engaged with this new learning platform. So we've been running a survey for the last five days, I believe. And the majority of our families would like to work through. I know there were some, it's, there was several reasons why some wanted to keep it. But predominantly, it was families wanted to maintain this level of engagement now with their, with their children. Families are not going, they're not traveling now. So that was one. Our teachers and our paraeducators also are in agreement. But I think the biggest deciding factor was when I spoke with Whitson's, our food service group, that if our school is not in session, we cannot serve meals for the week that they are off. And that, to me, if our goal is safety and being sure that our students' basic needs are met, I am asking for the board to vote on working through April break and making the last day of school now Friday, June 12th. At this point, it doesn't change graduation date. We can talk about that later. You know, there's just so much uncertainty now, you know, with, with students even returning back to our buildings before the end of the school year. We're waiting for those decisions to be made at the state level. But we, we will say, and for me, the biggest factor is, I need to know that we are feeding our students and all of New Brunswick's kids for the week that would have been April break.
Okay. Did we get a motion on this? No, we didn't.
Can I turn? Can I just?
So let's start with the man.
I think we have to motion first.
Yes, so let's get a motion. Who'd like to make the motion to, okay, so Nick, go ahead.
I motion to amend the 2019-2020 school year calendar to eliminate April vacation and to change the end of school date to June, Friday, June 12th.
Second, Gail.
Okay, so Gail seconded. Is there some discussion on this?
I will say that I did check the poll on Facebook, and it was like 70, 30, 70 in favor.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I muted? Okay. Yeah, I think with all the work that's been put into getting everybody online, distant learning, the lunches, the meals, everything, I think it's the smartest thing is just to continue on and not try to stop this momentum that we're on. I don't think it makes sense. So I'm in favor to keep going until, you know, push to the end of the year, June 12th.
Okay. Go ahead, Nick, do you want to, see you raising your hand?
Just to second what Ms. Sarri has just said, I agree fully. I also think it's important, as we go forward, that we communicate this out very effectively to parents. And one thing that I've been hearing a lot as a teacher from my principal that I think is very important in this time is relationships over rigor and contact over content, in the sense that we, in many ways, are one of the few agencies that is in touch with some of our neediest families. And just being mindful of that and being very flexible. The number of students I have working on things late at night, and the times when I get emails and comments and notices from students doing work, there, it's all over the place. We have many families with people who are still working because they, you know, are essential. And I think it's just important that we be mindful and supportive of both our teachers and our families as we go forward and understand that, you know, even though we're going on with school during April vacation, that we're not doing it to try to burden our families or wear them down. But we want to support them and be a resource that's still available for them.
Thank you, are there any other comments? Violet? Can unmute yourself?
Yes, hi. Sorry, okay. Echoing some of the same things, and I also want to highlight how many things have to be thought about to make a decision like this? That, as Gail said, the Facebook poll, which obviously is not every single family, but a large number of them responded, showed great support for this. And so maybe it's not going to be perfect for every single person, but we have to think about the sort of grand scheme. And with thinking of all the moving pieces, like meals for people who rely on them, and following that momentum and all of those things, this is the best decision. And so nothing is going to be perfect right now. But I just want to reiterate how much, you know, none of these decisions are taken lightly.
Okay. Anybody else would like to make a comment or ask a question? You can unmute. Go ahead.
Mentioned that the pares and teachers are in support of this. Are there any other collective bargaining issues? And do we have drafted MOUs? Or is there anything that's required that we need to get signed and approved by the unions before we go forward with this? Like in putting it into effect?
So we have a, an MOU signed with the teachers' union. Nothing in there talks about, and the teachers' union is in full support. I believe it was 88% of the teachers voted yea. 12% either didn't respond, and that was out of, and hopefully, Ms. Jessica Bowles will be texting me momentarily to tell me how many teachers maybe didn't participate. But it was unanimous. 1186, it does not impact, which are custodians, our secretaries. And I think everyone just feels, we're just starting to feel somewhat normal as we navigate this new time. And then to interrupt it with five days, students not engaging, five days, we're not engaging, we would lose momentum. And it's critically important now that we continue to engage our families, not, not shut them down. And for me, again, I'll reiterate, we have been saying since the start of this, and Nick, you said it so eloquently. I will tell you that I, I will take that phrase. Contact, contact over content, relationship over rigor. I'll make sure that I give your superintendent or your principal credit for those, for that phrase. But that's basically, that's echoing what we've been talking about across our, our staff. You know, this is a very difficult time for our staff as they navigate working professionally and personal on one space. Our families, it's no different for them. But many of our families are out working. And so it's respecting the, the ground that we've, we've covered to date. And while, and I just made this in my Monday's communication today, we've had over 5,000 teacher interactions with students over this past week. And our goal this week is to get our students from, you know, unmuting themselves and actually participating in Google Classroom. And our challenge is for all of our students this week to try to hit 1,000. Reach out to your teachers, make sure. And I don't want to lose ground with that.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions, thoughts? You can unmute yourself or raise your hand, either one. Okay. So we have a seconded motion. All in favor? Say aye and thumbs up?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will move on to item D, which is a purchase order for a forklift. Is there a motion in favor?
Motion to approve the purchase order of a forklift truck in the amount of $22,921.
And I'll second that. It's Gail.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion. Somebody like to explain this for someone who didn't read the packet?
Sure, I believe Mr. Moore is on the phone, is on, in the meeting. Mr. Moore, can you speak up, unmute?
Mr. Moore may not have reconnected after executive session. I believe he was in the call, but I had to punt him because he was still hanging in executive session.
Mr. Kane can speak to it then.
Okay.
Okay.
Kevin, you'll have to unmute yourself.
What? Well, can you hear me? It's Gail.
Yeah, okay, Kevin's unmuted. Go ahead.
It's the pizza guy.
AFT.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, so I'm, we're on what, the forklift?
Yeah.
Yes, this is something that was requested by Mr. Moore facility over a year ago. Smalley has a, a large storage area that's being used by both the, the district and the city. And we do have the funds available in this year's budget to do so. That's what you're seeing right here.
And so this is a forklift, so you can get stuff up to the top shelves in the 20-foot-high ceiling there?
That's correct. We have a lot of sharp people here, we can't go that high.
Okay. So any further questions from the board members about this?
So there was a key point that Kevin made, it's Gail. We share this storage facility with the city. Are they going to split the bill for the forklift? Or is this the full, this is the full amount?
The full amount. I mean, it's really, to be honest with you, it really services us more than the city.
Okay, I'm good.
We'll get them some other way.
Okay. So anybody have any further questions?
I did not.
Okay, so all in favor of item D and the new business agenda of the $22,000 for a forklift?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thumbs up.
Aye.
This is horrible.
You are unmuted, Ms. Leia.
I didn't say anything.
No, I.
I didn't say anything.
I think at one of these times, we've got to have something that we do thumbs down, just because, you know, it would be different. But, so we'll wait for Kevin's item for that. Okay, so let's move on to the next one, which is item E, purchase of the rooftop unit for North End School. Mr. Moore, I think you're back. You want to unmute yourself and, let's see, I'm just trying to find Mr. Moore. Okay, you are unmuted. Go ahead and tell us about this, please.
Yeah, the, the floor at North End, the gym floor at North End School is failing. And the reason why is because the space underneath the gym is air-conditioned in the cafeteria. The gym floor above the cafeteria has no air conditioning. When it gets warm out and humid in the months of April, May, June, and September, humidity builds up on the gym floor when the warm air upstairs on the second floor hits the cold floor, and all the floors fail. The only way to prevent the gym floor from failing is to install air conditioning in the gym. A large percentage of this cost of this air conditioning unit for the North End Gym to protect the floor is, is being paid for out of a grant. It's been, we went out to bid, Save More Heating and Cooling out of Plainville is the low bidder. And I'm excited to be working with them again and to solve this problem at the North End School.
Okay, are there any questions from board members about this? Did I get a seconded motion on this? Am I doing it backwards again?
Motion to approve the purchase.
Motion to approve the purchase and installation of a rooftop unit at North End Elementary in the amount of $173,000.
Is there?
Second by Tony.
Okay, second by Tony. Okay. Any questions from board members? Okay. All in favor of the rooftop air conditioning unit for Northern School? Say aye and thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to the next item, which is the bid waiver and purchase of an installation of the Peerless Boilers Advanced School. Mr. Moore?
We've installed about 15 of these Peerless boilers in various schools throughout the district. They are extremely energy efficient, saving us at least 20% on fuel costs. We'll know exactly what that figure is at the end of this fiscal year. In addition to a 20% fuel savings, EverSource is giving us a rebate of $37,000 for this set of three boilers. So you can reduce the cost of this particular boiler by 37,000. The majority of the cost for these boilers will be paid for out of the board budget and rebates that we receive for the three sets of Peerless boilers that we just installed at Pulaski, Slade, and Roosevelt. So looking forward to another energy conservation project that saves us money and brings us money back into the district.
Okay. I did this backwards again. Is there a second, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the purchase order and bid waiver for the installation of three Peerless boilers at Vans Elementary in the amount of $154,478.93.
Second, Gail.
Okay. All in favor? All right, I guess.
Aye.
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 All right. Okay. Let's move on to the next one, which is a contract and partnership agreement between, a contract between Community Mental Health Affiliates and the Board of Education. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the contract between the Community Mental Health Affiliates Incorporated and New Britain Public Schools.
And a second. Diana, okay, Diana seconded. She jumped in there and beat Annie. Okay, so now I've confused everybody by doing it in the right order. Someone want to tell us about this contract?
Sure. Mr. Spalding?
Hi, hi, everyone.
Okay.
This is a, this is a program, obviously with the community health, health affiliates. They employ the cognitive behavioral intervention for trauma in schools. This program would be employed over at our, at Lincoln in our small classroom settings for kids through elementary school. And the program is utilized to reduce PTSD and depression systems. And what this program, this particular program, there would be small groups, update students. They would come in and support them 30 minutes a week, once a week for 10, eight to 10 weeks. So again, it's supported specifically to support the programs over at Lincoln.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Yes, this is, this is Nick. I just have a, a quick question. If I'm reading this correctly, this is just allowing them to come in and provide these services, but it's not a funding. It's funded through where?
Mr. Spalding, can I answer that?
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So this is again, similar to our other partnerships with Community Health Center and actually not Klingberg, because there is a cost associated with Klingberg. But it's coming in and billing through Medicaid. And so it's, we're giving in kind. You'll, you'll see probably, I know Mr. Pierce is talking to them about our high school as well as Brookside. So this is just yet another partner who's come forward with a, with a unique skillset, something that we don't get from CHC. We are, we, we, we've met with Mr. Porcher and his staff several times. All the pupil service staff have met as far as supervisors. So there's no cost to us.
Okay.
That's pretty awesome.
Any further questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Thumbs up.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. All right, so the next one is a contract and partnership agreement with CREC and the New Britain Schools. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Annie.
Okay. Moved by Gail, seconded by Annie. And can we get an explanation on this?
Sure. I'm going to invite Dr. Sanders to speak on this, please.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Good. Hi. My CREC partnership is actually aligned to our Minority Teacher Recruitment and Retention Initiative. And the goal of the program is, we have reached out to some of our paras and our BSAs within the district to invite them to apply for our residency program through CREC. And what it is, is once they're accepted into the residency program, maybe one or two candidates that we're looking for this year, they will work alongside a master teacher at Smalley Elementary School that has been the designated, the school to house the residency program. And they will work almost like in an apprentice model underneath the teacher for an entire year while they're going through their classwork and coursework and seminar work to help to strengthen their capacity to teach. There will also be support to help them pass the praxis because that's a really hard test for, for our teachers to pass in order to get their certification. So it's, the CREC partnership is really an experience for our district to support with minority recruitment as well as to give them onsite training on what it looks and feel like to be a teacher in our schools. So that's really the CREC partnership in a nutshell.
Can I add to that, Dr. Sanders, too? And just the bigger picture here, as we, as we know, that's one of our main goals in our talent office. We still are, we are still partnering with Relay. That's really more for our secondary. This was actually Greg Florio from CREC approached me about six months ago. And we, we feel like we've, we've done, we've done okay with recruitment. We haven't done excellent. And so to kind of move this along a bit, we created a small, small team. Dr. Sanders leads that team. Kiva Mancini, my executive assistants, is also on that team. And Salas Cabalas will also be working on this team to recruit through Troops for Teachers, through the CREC. And right now, CREC is only offering, they are only offering elementary certification. Relay offers more than that. We are in, we want to invest in our current staff to have them teach in our district. And we think that we, again, we're only asking for one or two seats at the table with CREC because we want to make sure that we're being smart consumers here and that this experience works well for our teachers as well.
Okay. Diane has her hand raised?
So, hi, everybody. I'm very familiar with this program. We have over five actually placed resident teachers at the school that I work at, at CREC. Couple of things that I'm not seeing or not understanding and maybe can be explained. One, who is paying for them, their salary? So I know that our teacher residents get money for being part of the program. So that's my first question. And my second question would be, or a consideration. The master teachers have to be outstanding individuals to participate in this. And who is determining who the master teachers are? And how are the master teachers also being sort of compensated for the amount of work that they're going to be doing with these resident teachers? Because this is not like student teaching. These, these resident teachers are not only learned, they're, they're basically building the plane and flying it at the same time. Student teaching, children, students come in with a lot of pedagogy. They already have the basics and then they go to apply it. So this is very different. And so those are my two big questions based on my experience with the program.
So, you want to answer that?
I can, I can answer the, the question around the master teacher and, and, and choosing a particular school who has already team mentor trained teachers, but also during the CREC residency program, the master teachers also go through rigorous application process as well, where a part of it, given where we are, is there is an actual observation of their classroom. The, the teachers who we've identified along with the principal of the school who will potentially serve as master teachers. I'm very familiar with their teaching because I have observed them and I've also been very familiar with their work with student teachers in their particular building. And working with Marlene and Yushanda who oversee the CREC residency program. They will be extremely involved in the application process, which is also very rigorous. And it's a three-part interview for that purpose for both the, the teacher as well as the master teacher involved in the program. And as far as the candidates themselves, one of the things during the informational session that was truly and consistently expressed was that it is a time commitment. It is dedication to the work and it is going to be a hard program for them to go through. But the support that the CREC residency program has embedded for all of their candidates is very impressive to help them get through. Our candidates that participate, well, our potential candidates who participated, they were vetted and spoken to by me individually, calling out to see what their initial interest was. And we had 10 people who participated actually in the informational session. And of the 10, we've had three who are interested. So that's the tiered approach that we're going to with the, with the staff. And also we'll be doing the same thing with the potential master teachers. As far as the, the financing, I'll let superintendent talk about that a little bit. But there is some grant money that's going to be coming to support New Britain with the CREC residency program.
Thanks, Dr. Sanders. Yes, so we've been guaranteed, it doesn't cover in full. We, we will be compensating. I'm getting an echo, I'm sorry. We will be compensating the, the one or two apprentices during this time. Mr. Kane and I have discussed this. We've discussed it in cabinet. And Mr. Kane, if you could just come up with a total, the total amount that we'll be spending for two people. It's under, we, and, and I have to say, we're asking people to take on something that's difficult. We are tapping people who have talent in our district already. What we want to ensure is that there's an income coming in for them as well as benefits because the candidates have families and they have to make sure that they are maintaining, maintaining an income and, and health benefits during this year. So, Mr. Kane?
Okay, yeah, yes, the program itself through CREC for about 185 days is supposed to cost upwards of $50,000. CREC is, but it's positioned, all the, all these candidates can get paid the same. I believe it's either 32, 32 or $34,000 for that 185 days plus health benefits. In addition, we're going to bring, we're going to bring our two candidates in during the summertime and pay them approximately the same dollar amounts. They'll, they'll be learning this summer for additional $10,000 apiece. So the cost will be somewhere in the 50, 60 range for each candidate.
And I want to add too, this is, this is growing our own model and recognizing that our current staff can't be without income or benefits during this time, but that we will benefit and our kids will benefit in the long run. Remember, this is just for elementary education certification.
Okay. And Nick, you're next.
So one of my concerns is just this being a contract that we're signing into for the upcoming school year. And right now, we are all hoping that next year's school year looks like a normal school year. But I don't think we can say that with any certainty, given the situation we're in. And I'm concerned that I don't see anything in the agreement that allows us to decline participating if we find ourselves heading into September not really knowing what, what the school year is going to be like and what the situation is. If we are still doing a distance learning model at the start of next year, which hopefully we aren't. But who knows? So I'm just concerned that it binds us into something where we really don't have a way out.
That's a good point that Nick addressed. And I agree with him.
So I can, I can offer up to say that we can go back to CREC. I mean, when we drew up this contract, this wasn't, our situation now wasn't what the situation was then. So clearly, I, I don't think they'd have a problem adding a clause in to that effect that will not hold us, we, we won't be obligated if, if indeed. And we can, we can have our attorneys write something up to that effect and bring it back for the May meeting.
I agree with you, Superintendent, because what I also know is they're still adjusting their dates and what their summer program will look like as well. So they're very, you know, they're in the schools also. But it's just keeping along the what-ifs, we go back to school and what will the summer programming look like as well? And with this program, those of, those residents who become accepted because they have to go through the process, they have to commit to our district for two to three years. They can't go anywhere because we've invested in them. And I will tell you honestly, the, the, the one or two candidates who, who will be going through the application process, they are committed to it already. I've been working with them just about every single day. So I, I agree with that as well, Nick. And I can talk to Marlene and Yushanda about it. I'm quite sure, as Superintendent said, they will understand that adjustment that may have to be made even on their end.
So is there, we had a couple of other people who wanted to speak. I think the next was Violet.
All right. Hello. So I'm also very familiar with this program. I was actually on the very first search committee when CREC started this and I was working for them at the time. And I actually wrote the syllabus for the EL class initially. So I'm really glad that we're embarking on this and joining this partnership for a number of reasons. And so, you know, I'm a professor in a teacher education program. And so, you know, I'm a professor in a teacher education program, in a, in a traditional teacher education program. And obviously I truly believe in that model. And I think sometimes people are, you know, it, it's one thing or the other that they support sort of some of the alternate routes, um, versus traditional models. But I think there's a place for both. And this program specifically, um, I'm, I'm really excited for because element, while other alternate routes offer, um, certification in the shortage areas, elementary ed is not a shortage area. But it is the absolute least diverse area, um, of education. And so there are a lot of barriers to people of color, um, getting into elementary ed programs. Because it's not a shortage area, the traditional programs, like the one I am professor in now, um, are extremely competitive and have, um, you know, a lot, a lot of things that could definitely be considered, uh, barriers to people of color. So although it's not one of the shortage areas or secondary or all those things that other alternate route, um, programs help people who are already in the field get certified in. Um, I think immensely important, uh, if we're truly committed to diversifying educate because that, that is the area with the least diversity. Diane mentioned about, uh, the sort of the pedagogy that other teachers have by the time they go into student teaching. You've obviously seen it in practice a little bit more than I, because I, I left once it kind of started going. But the, those summer sessions that Dr. Sanders, um, mentioned, you know, sort of fill in some of those gaps, uh, before the teachers are in the classroom. And also, you know, because it's not your traditional, like 18-year-old going to college to become a teacher. These people have often decades of, uh, you know, or many years of the practical experience in our buildings. And they, so they have a lot of that, that they can bring in them. So anyway, I just wanted to, uh, point out how important I think it is to, um, embark on something like this specifically because it's for elementary ed, which is unheard of and not something that, um, any other program in Connecticut actually does right now.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and Gail, you had your hand up and then you said your question is being answered. Any, do you have, anybody else have anything they want to, um, ask about? Okay. Gail's got her hand back up. Go ahead. Gail? You need to unmute yourself.
I'm trying. Oh, there we go. Okay. So I heard Nicole say that the teacher that gets accepted into the program, they have to stay two to three years. Is it two years? Is it three years? And what happens if they do leave?
What do you mean by when they do, they, they're going to be obligated to stay with us for the time period that we have, um, put into, um, first, I'm, I'm going to say this, is the individuals who are applying that have been in our district for many years. Um, and, and while we've said, um, two to three years is the commitment as a teacher, I'm going to firmly believe that they're so committed to the district with wanting to be in the program and going through it, that they may stay for the duration of their teaching career. But that is the commitment and we're good, we have, um, we're, um, drawing up some additional, um, um, documents to say when you get accepted, it's a two to three year commitment. Um, but for me, that's not the concern with these individuals who've been in the district for many years, that they would just, um, not continue for the duration again of their teaching career. If it was someone from the outside, I would be a little bit reserved with that comment. Um, but not with these individuals. But we're still going to plan for that as well, Gail.
Okay. I was just going to say, cause like right now my, my company is paying for my college education, right? For my degree. I have to stay. If I don't stay, I have to pay the money back. So what happens if they, they do leave?
I say we have them pay the money back.
Okay.
Okay, Nick.
And they will be recruited. I'll be honest with you, right? I mean, and, and
Yeah, they're going to be recruited.
But, but we have to at least, we have to at least have a return on our investment. And so figuring out if it's two years or three years in that contract, you know, we determine how much we've spent on this person's education. And, and, uh, then we determine the years in service to make back those dollars.
Okay. So I have several hands raised here. Um, Nick and then Violet.
Uh, I'd actually like to make a motion, uh, because I believe the motion we have is to amend, uh, to adopt or approve the, uh, one second.
Contract.
Yeah, we, we have a motion to approve the contract. I'd like to amend the motion to, uh, prove the contract, uh, between, oh man, I lost myself on here. I apologize. Amend the motion to approve the contract and partnership agreement between crack and the New Britain Public Schools, pending the inclusion of a opt-out provision related to, uh, coronavirus and COVID-19.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's. Mr. Kane, all right. Uh, so we have a amendment to the original motion. Uh, is there discussion on the amendment?
Just, just to clarify, we're not actually amending the document of the agreement. But what we're saying is the board is giving approval for this. Our motion is saying we approve it, assuming that our lawyers can negotiate sufficient, uh, sufficient escape language.
Okay. Gail, did you have something you wanted to add?
I do, just because I don't see anything in that contract for our teachers. It's strictly the contract for crack. But if we enter into this with crack and we have nothing for our teachers, like a contract with our teachers that enter into this program, we still have to go forward with the program. Does that make sense? Like, I would like to see what our teachers' contract is that are entering into the program.
Okay. I see Nick raising his hand.
There's actually something in there. Uh, let me find the exact page. Um, but it is, it is actually covered in there. It says that part of it is, uh, based on the approval of a, like, we have to get a, oh my goodness. There it is. Um, if you look under areas of responsibility, it says the district shall. And under C, number two, it, uh, C talks about both of those things. It says, determine the employee classification for residents and the pay rate, which means we have to determine what, what we're paying residents. And then underneath that, it says negotiate a stipend with the district's teachers' union for the master teacher, uh, commensurate with the expectations outlined in the sample partnership agreement. And so one of the things that we have to do under this contract is actually negotiate with the unions, what that stipend is going to look like.
The stipend is for the master teacher, Nick?
Right. That's what I mean. Yes. And the, and the point above that, the, uh, first point above that says that we have to negotiate, you know, what the employee classification and pay rate is for the residents as well. So we're obligated to both figure out what we're going to pay the residents. Um, and we are obligated to figure out what we're going to pay the master teachers. Those are both provisions in this contract.
Yes. So, so does that cover that teacher signing a contract saying, I will stay with the district for two years once I complete my training? Or whatever you come up with?
That would be a separate document between the residents and the district.
And, and Kiva and I are working on that as well.
Right. So keep in mind, if you sign this contract, regardless of Kiva and, and whoever comes up with this contract, we've already entered into this contract.
So are you suggesting, uh, so the amendment here is that we would approve that the entering into this contract, if there's escape language for, uh, because of coronavirus. Gail, are you also saying that, uh, you want to see, uh, a requirement that the district, uh, negotiate some language with the apprentice candidates, uh, regarding a commitment to stay in the district if, when they've completed the process?
Right. Before we sign that contract would be my preference.
So Nick, would you consider that a friendly amendment to your amendment?
I was waiting my turn to talk, but I, I disagree with that. Um, I disagree with actually adding that clause for the candidates. So, um, crack has been doing the program for several years. And they do not, um, require through a contract or anything like that, that the candidates actually stay working for them because it is looked at. Um, obviously we want to encourage these people to become certified. And it's a benefit to us for them to diversify our workforce. And if they've been with us for a long time and that's what they want to do, um, then, you know, we believe that, that they're going to stay with us. And if they don't, you just kind of cut your losses and move on. Now, something that's important to know about the correct residency program is that they do recruit outside. So New Britain is very specifically only looking at their own candidates right now to put in. Um, correct, uh, the, the first committee I was on, we ended up taking, the candidates were so good. We were supposed to take 10. We ended up taking 12. And I would say that about six were outsiders and about six were, um, current, uh, correct employees at that time. So nothing would actually stop some of our New Britain people from just applying to the correct one all by themselves and just leaving New Britain altogether and still getting the exact same thing. So it would not make any sense to me, knowing that side of the program, um, and that they will know all that for us to add something like that. Um, I don't think it would be conducive to what we're trying to do. I understand the usual sort of corporate thing of, you know, if we pay for your schooling, um, you stick with us, but this is different. Um, I think, and I think is, again, it's, it's a big benefit to the district. It's not as much as, uh, like we're doing you a favor by putting you through this. Although obviously the person is hugely benefiting, but it's usually somebody who's been, um, working for us for a long time and has already shown that commitment. Um, it, it's almost like gratitude for them showing that commitment for this long, um, and taking that next step. But just know that because crack doesn't always, doesn't only take internal people and they do not make them sign that, I think it would be counterintuitive to what we're doing. But that's my piece on that. And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to agree.
Just hold on, um, please. I just want to say this, that entire conversation is separate issue because that's not the motion that's before us right now. Cause I, I wouldn't consider it a friendly amendment. It's a completely separate issue. So if we could stick to the coronavirus thing first, and then if we want to discuss that after.
Okay. So let's return to, uh, any further discussion about the amendment to, uh, the proposed contract regarding, uh, an out for coronavirus interruption of the next school year? Any, anybody else have anything else to say about that?
No.
Yes.
Diane has her.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. Um, with the motion, this is only the motion to include a loophole for us in case there's a situation where we don't return to school in September.
That's what this amendment is. Yes.
Okay. So when I'm reading what is, is part of our regular board meeting, um, notes. And there is, um, is this the actual contract on page 130, 131?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. So I, just to make sure I'm not fully understanding, I want to be clear. What we design as a contract of, or a memorandum of understanding, whatever you want to call it, between master teachers and the board and the district and resident teachers and the district are completely separate from this.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion of the amendment to create an out for the district in case the next school year is impacted by coronavirus? Going once, going twice. All right. Uh, we have a seconded motion, all in favor of, uh, amending the original motion to include an out for coronavirus interrupted next school year. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So now let's go back to the original motion and, uh, Gail, do you want to make an amendment? Do you want to not make an amendment? What do you want to do?
No, because I, I mean, Nick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think my option is to say no to the contract because I'd rather see something for the candidates entering. It's not about the contract because I'm all for the program. I'm just not for giving something when they're not going to give something back. I know they're going to come back and teach and I agree with the program. I think it's great. All of that. I don't dispute that. It's more, they can be recruited and we just spent $70,000 on them or $60,000 on them.
Okay, Diane? Diane?
Mr. Kane, you're unmuted.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with Violet, Dr. Sims, about what she commented earlier on the residents and not having them in a contract. However, there's one thing that, um, wasn't mentioned by Dr. Sims is that the correct residents are basically offered a position for the, once they've completed the program. So somewhere within crack, they will be offered a position. So I'm wondering if that's something that could be part of the negotiations. And Gail would, would like to see something like that where if you're being promised a teaching position within the district, more than likely, and New Britain's a, a very good paying district, um, more than likely, these people have been with us and they're going to maintain and stay with us and take up a classroom position with us.
Okay, Nick?
Uh, that's actually in the contract as it exists right here. Um, if you look under the district shall have the following responsibilities. Item G says, uh, sorry, not G. Um, where was it? There it is. Item I says, uh, item I on page 131 says that the district will offer residents who have completed the program requirements, a full-time position as an elementary school teacher. So what it's saying is
To me, that satisfies it.
Um, because I will tell you, I, I think that if you had other teachers go through this program, there may be an attempt by another district to hire them. But having that position in hand and not having to go out and compete and go through the excessive interview process, uh, and also to be in a place that's already acknowledged and supporting you because, uh, first year teachers often have a very high burnout rate and it's even higher among minorities. So taking the risk of jumping ship to a district where I don't have a support network or connections, I, I don't think you're going to find that many teachers who are going to use this program to get the training. And realistically, uh, with all that crack's providing in terms of paying for the, you know, providing coursework, providing assistance for passing the praxis and all of that. I, I think our cost is relatively minimal because we're also getting an adult in the building who is working alongside a master teacher and having another body in the room. Uh, you know, it's not like they're doing nothing there.
Also, last
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, also, I, I, I don't know if this is true, but when they, if they're already in the system, wouldn't that count towards this seniority also? That those years would be counted when it came to, uh, retirement? If they've already worked as a para? If they've already worked as a para?
Anybody know?
I would ask Kevin Kane, but I don't believe, TRB is its own retirement, right, Annie? So I mean, the para, the para union are not members of TRB. So they'd be starting out in TRB. What they might, and Kevin I see is on too, what they, you know, having years of experience and already working well with students would probably start them off beyond step one, right?
Okay.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got several more hands here. Gail and then Violet.
I think I just turned my mic off. So did Diane, Diane say that once these, they enter this program, CREG does offer them a job?
Yeah, except in this case, we would be offering them the job, not, not CREG.
Right. Technically, that's what we would. Right. Our contract with CREG is to, we bought two seats. Learning table. They, they are New Britain staff. They'll be doing their apprenticeship in New Britain and they'll be offered a job by New Britain. Okay. But, okay.
And I know that in the current cohort, there is somebody from New Britain who is getting it, will be offered a job by CREG. Because that's prior to us entering, to New Britain entering into the agreement with CREG to have this residency program for ourselves.
Right. So that's, that's just my point. We could spend the money. I'm all for the program because I think a lot of our paras, it's really just they don't have the means or the way to actually get themselves into school. Right? And complete a program. So I'm all for the program. I would just like to see the return on investment.
Right. Yeah. What I'm saying is that we, because we don't have the program now, we are going to lose a para who wants to become a teacher because CREG offered this opportunity for them to do it.
Right.
Okay. So now Diana, did you get, Diane, did you get a chance to ask questions?
Diane Leah is fine. I'm good.
You're set. Okay. So Violet.
Um, I partially forgot while I was waiting, but I think you just illustrated some of what I was talking about. You know, a New Britain person can just go apply to the CREG one and not have, you know, this extra clause that we may come up with. And so we don't want to make it unattractive that way. But I was gonna, I, oh, I know what I was gonna talk about was the TRB. Yes. So they're not, they wouldn't be ahead for retirement in that case. However, maybe Kevin or someone else on cabinet can confirm. I believe there's something in the union contracts though, that even though you move positions to a different union, because you've been in the district, you do have seniority within the district in the, in the new union. Like your time before counts toward that, not toward retirement specifically. But that's a big, you know, definitely a big draw that people don't want to lose going somewhere else.
That's a long.
If these employers are, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. You probably don't see me. If they are our employees, let's say we have a para that is actually going through this program. They will still be part of the current pension plan, the Murph Pension Plan. So they will have a year of additional pension. They do not, I believe they do not qualify for TRB until they become a teacher. But they still have that year. So they're in a pair for eight years. They have nine years. They will have a pension. Even if they become a teacher, that stays with them.
And to Violet's point, they have years of service already with the city. While that doesn't count toward their retirement, we'll look at those as, you know, years of experience toward and maybe not starting at a step one bachelor's, but maybe, you know, again, and I think it's case by case. We don't want to commit to any of that, but starting them off. And again, I mean, the higher they start, the more income earned over time and, and so that.
Violet, do you want to clarify?
No, that was it. That wasn't exactly the question I was asking Kevin, but it's okay. It's all good. Yeah, I know they wouldn't be in TRB until you're a certified teacher. And it's not the pension thing. It was more about the years of service and how obviously that helps. So that's it.
Okay. So is there any further discussion of this point? Are we ready to vote on the overall motion? The amended motion about approving this contract with CREG? Assuming that we can negotiate a contract, an out in case next year is interrupted? All right. Hearing, seeing nobody else wanting to discuss this, I'm going to ask for all in favor, say aye, thumbs up.
Aye.
Are there anybody voting against it?
Gail.
Gail. Okay. All right. So the motion carries, nine to one. And now let's move on to our next item. We have the finance report. Kevin, you want to? So we have, let's have a motion to accept the finance report. Gail?
Don't, sorry, don't we have aye?
Aye.
Kelly Services.
Oh, yes. You're right. I'm missing it here.
Not that I really wanted to continue, but.
Motion to approve the proposed contract agreement for educational services between Kelly Services Incorporated and the Consolidated School District of New Britain for the 2021 school year.
Second.
Is there a second? Who is that? Is that Gail?
Gail. Sorry.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Okay. Gail first, then Annie?
Yeah. So I can't get back to the page and I noticed that, that one of them, the rate is TBD. Is that normal practice to sign a contract with a rate of TBD? I'm trying to get back there. It's super duper slow. To the.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
It's so slow.
This is for long-term substitutes and para professionals.
Really, I mean, this contract they brought forward, I'll be honest with you, is the same contract we have for this year. So that hasn't, this contract hasn't changed at all. Good question. I don't know what TBD means. I know it means to be determined. I'm not sure what it means here.
Right.
So we can look into it, but really I think with Kelly Services, there have been discussions about possibly changing or at least going out, changing. I think when the issue grabbed now, now Marianne O'Manning is coming in, Dr. Tucker was here. We really had no movement going out. So we were sort of stuck right now, but we need to look at next year how to change. There's not a lot of vendors out there. There's always a discussion you do in-house. You know, right now, this is the only option out there.
It may be the only option, but I don't know how you can sign a contract with a TBD in there or a rate. They could put any rate. Granted, they probably wouldn't, but.
It has to be mutually agreed upon if it's left TBD.
Yeah. I mean, they're using the same markup, but they're geez, long-term sub, soup discretion, HR approval. I would have to look into that. I'm not aware what this is.
I was, I was trying to wait my turn again, but it's TBD for long-term subs because long-term subs are different than your daily sub that's at a certain rate. Long-term subs are actually paid based on what degree they have, if they're certified in the area that they're long-term subbing. And so there's no way to put a rate in there. Those are negotiated case by case every time.
Well, wouldn't you have a minimum and a maximum between?
Nope.
Well, you see, one thing with Kelly's service.
Yeah. Sometimes they're paid just like a teacher if they have the cert and all that. And so it would be like, you know, step one teacher, whatever. Sometimes it's not like a teacher at all. It's because of the degree or whatever. It might be like, you know, rather than their $100 a day that they pay another sub, you know, 130 or something. But you, they don't write in. I mean, I've seen these contracts in other districts. They never write in the amount there just because it is a case by case basis. But like Kevin said, it would have to be mutually agreed upon. They can't just be like, it's a million dollars for five days for this person. Like.
400 dollars a day. Yeah.
Right. Prudential as to why they're getting that.
Okay. Nick, you had your hand raised?
I also believe this is only in the case that Kelly Services provides the sub for us. I believe we also regularly host for long-term subs and hire them directly. So this is if we get someone who's placed through Kelly. If we hire them ourselves and it's not.
You're correct, Nick. I mean, for the most part, we do have some long-term subs that we hire ourselves directly. We also have Mark Spalving through People Services uses another agencies for paras. Really, Kelly Services is primarily for teachers, not for paras. But I think right here, if it's needed, we use them. But Mark Spalving has actually used another service. I can't remember the agency he uses. I think it's Delta.
It's Soliant. And, and just so you know, I mean, it says per superintendent's discretion as well. Does TBD say that?
Yes, it does.
It does.
All right. All right. Do we have any further discussion on this item?
Can somebody point me where it says the TBD has to be mutually agreed upon? Or am I just totally missing it? This is only part of the contract?
That's just standard in contracts. If there's something that is, you know, that's a rate that says TBD.
Yeah.
In contract language?
Yeah, because if you think about it, a contract is a binding agreement between two parties.
Right.
And so if there's any area that is not mutually agreed upon, that's when you get lawyers involved.
Okay.
Okay. So any further discussion on this? So let me ask for a vote here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And now we have the finance report. And then we've got one more item, which was the one that we were supposed to talk about in executive session. So we'll have to go into executive session once again for the last one. But first, let's do the finance report. Is there a motion to accept the finance report?
No, there's no motion to accept the finance.
Okay. Moved by Gail, seconded by Annie. Mr. Kane?
Yes. See, does anybody have any questions? You want me to go through it? And usually you've seen the same report.
Give us the very high level.
I know. The finance chair has questions all the time.
The only thing I had was, I apologize because when I saw pending budget transfers, when I initially reviewed, there are none. So I should have had it on consent.
Yes. You know, just to tell you really quickly, within the operating budget this year, we have some, you know, we have some pluses and minuses, but we're doing, we're going to do okay. So I don't want anybody to sit here saying that, you know, financial, we have concerns this year. We don't.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions about this?
No.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. So we have one more item, item E, that we were supposed to talk about in executive session, but I forgot to put it into the motion for the executive session. So we need to do that again.
Motion to go into an executive session to discuss vendor contracts with the board, Superintendent Sarah, Mr. Foran and Kevin Kane.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Annie has seconded. So this is the last item on the agenda. We will do the executive session. We'll come back in briefly to vote on the matter. But for the other cabinet members, you can probably call it a night here. So let's, we're going to go into executive session. Everybody besides those people who were just mentioned.
We need to vote.
Oh, yes. So we do need to vote. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right. We are moving into executive session.
I'm going to stop the stream and the recording. We will come back on the stream after this for adjournment or any other like motions pending to this. So I will let Kristin know when we're back in regular session. Stopping the stream, I think. Maybe. Maybe not. Of course, now it wants to lag on me. There we go.
Okay. Screaming is stopped. So we're just.
All right.
Kristin. Are we, do we have Kristin back yet?
I do not see Krista up. Is that her who just popped in? There she is. She is back.
Okay. And we are back in regular session. Do we have a motion on item B?
I, yes. Violet, I don't mind that was much way back in chat. I'd like to make a motion that to authorize the superintendent or her designee to enter into negotiations and execute contract amendments transportation vendors pursuant to Governor Lamont's executive order.
Second.
Okay. And just because the sound was a little weird, that was transportation vendors.
Correct.
Okay.
I am putting a copy of the, in which our secretary, he can have the exact word.
And we have a second from Annie. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's the last thing on the agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned.
Yay.
Have a good evening, everyone. Stopping the record.
Good night. Thank you, everyone. Stay healthy.
Good night.